The Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission Order for Monday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moving on to Article One, record the attendance are present. Moving to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and. Welcome, everybody here tonight. Moving on to Article Three, approve the current agenda.
So move.
So move by member Rissy. For support by member Rapp, and I heard him first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, nay. Moving on to Article Four, disclose any conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest that they wish to disclose? Hearing none, we will move forward. Article Five, acknowledge any visitors or those wishing to speak. You do not have a public hearing tonight, so on the current case is fine. Do we have anybody on Zoom? No. Suspect you are the applicant. Moving on to Article Six, case number twenty-two dash three seven two nine M T M interiors property address sixty-six six zero Old Twenty-Eighth Street.
All right. So tonight, the applicant requesting site plan approval for a new ten thousand square foot two-story commercial building at sixty-six sixty Old Twenty-Eighth Street, that size located on the south side of Old Twenty-Eighth Streets, right near the intersection with Twenty-Eighth Street, just on the northeast side of the library properties, right over that way, over the hill there. This is located in the B one zoning district. As I mentioned in my staff report there, it has been a while since we've had a site plan review for a new building in the B one district. As a reminder, all new buildings in that district must meet the design standards of Section eight oh eight of the zoning ordinance or receive a recommendation from the Village Design Review Committee to allow for an exception. So I do believe that the site is meeting those standards, but I did want to call special attention to standard six and eleven, as noted in the staff report, confirm that the planning commission believes those standards are also being met. The site appears to meet the height setback parking and buffer requirements of the zoning district. There is a sidewalk along the west side of the parking lot that extends into the buffer yard, but that is permitted by the zoning ordinance. I do also want to call it, there's a seven-foot tall retaining wall proposed at that location, and while the zoning ordinance doesn't provide specific requirements regarding fences or guards at the top of a wall, I know that that's been a topic of debate in the past, so I thought I'd highlight that there as well. The fire and building departments have reviewed and approved the plans, and the applicant has submitted photometric and landscape plans that do meet township requirements. I'm recommending the nineteen thousand dollar landscape bond be provided by the applicant. No new access to the site is being created, so there was not a review needed by the road commission. However, the applicant is providing a sidewalk to connect to the public sidewalk within the street right of way, so they should confirm whether a permit is needed or not for that work. The township engineer has reviewed and approved the plan, and a stormwater maintenance agreement will be required. So at this time, staff are recommending site plan approval for the ten thousand square foot building with the four conditions that are listed in the staff report.
So the Village Design Review Committee, when was the last time they met?
I don't know.
Are they a subcommittee of this body or?
That's where we elect one member to that committee. There's also one required from the Z B A, D D A, and Township Board, and then one additional member, and I would have to check if we have.
Is there anybody that is serving today that was elected to that, or is that?
Well, Scott's on it.
Scott's on it.
So from the Z B A and Planning Commission, we're pretty good at renewing that every year. I would have to check when the last time the Township Board and D D A have.
Scott, have you ever in your tenure met?
Well, I've only been on that committee for a year now, Mr. Chair.
Right, he was newly elected too.
And we have not met while I've been on the committee, because the last two people that I know of that were from this body representing that committee had never met as a committee either.
And I.
So who approves this?
The.
The design.
We.
No, but if the committee is not meeting.
So the planning commission.
There hasn't been a building built in the village.
No, but there's been changes to buildings. There's been like all of the like Starbucks and all of those.
Is that B one now?
That's in a P U D, so it's B one underling, but it might have a few different requirements. So yeah, it's strictly a B one. It's been a while since we've had a full, a new site plan coming.
I, I think, and I could be wrong on this, but I think it may have met when there was talk about, they were gonna, there was some B one property on, is it Orange Street?
Yep.
And that was developed, and I, I could be wrong, but I thought maybe they, they matter. There was discussion about whether or not they needed to meet at that time.
It could be.
But I, I don't believe that. And yeah, I'm not sure.
And it's my understanding, member, of course, that they set the standards and it's up to us to enforce them.
Right, they, they, the committee would only make recommendations to the planning commission. They don't have any authority to approve plans.
And staff feels that this fits even though they're doing masonry in the back. Yeah, that was my question. How, how come we're doing a different facade in the back? I mean, that's.
Right.
We can certainly ask the applicant to.
We can ask the applicant that, and then I note that masonry isn't allowed material to use, but it is different than the brick that's on the front three sides, so we could ask that, but then the reasoning for that, and then.
It's definitely exposed with the parking lot being behind it, right?
So it's on the west, this is the side that would be masonry.
Right, but there's a parking lot directly behind it.
Correct.
And Brian, do we have anything, and I apologize, I mean, it'd probably take me days to find it if we do, but do we have anything that states that two stories is okay there? I mean, I, okay.
Yep, so the maximum height is twenty-five feet, and they're right at that, and then they're allowed.
The curtis, or it's not curtis anymore, the building next to it's two-story.
I saw that, but none of the others are.
Yep.
In that old Twenty-Eighth Street, so.
Yep, it is.
The trend is.
Some of the office buildings that are back further are. Yeah, backward, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you go down to where the hardware store used to be.
The old D N W or the old hardware right there. Yeah, there's two stories in the back.
Well, how, how many square foot was the building that burned down? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know if it's shown on the plans or not.
I'll measure it in a minute. It's probably five thousand.
So it was footprint, right, smaller, because this is two-story.
Yes.
Um, can you tell me, I, I don't recall what the building was there before the one that burned down?
It was.
It's like a brown wood building.
No, seriously, it wasn't. It just had a glass door in the front. It was a multi-tenant.
Yeah, I think they've had a few tenants coming in and out of there.
It's aesthetically much, please.
This is, yeah, it was used as, for, I think, a variety of uses, as if they're to some office use.
Okay, and then the second part of my question is, is there, because it burned down, is there any kind of cleanup in the soil that needs to happen or did it, or?
We can.
We'll, we'll wait for you to, I want to get you on the record. Any other questions for staff? Yes, member Rissy.
It measures out on an aerial about eight thousand square foot.
The previous.
The previous building, and that was the sides of that building in the back, the part you didn't see from the road was mostly concrete.
Right.
That was, you know, concrete block structure.
I was in that building, my, my neighbor was a tenant, so I was in that building months before it burned down, and it was rough.
Yeah.
The interior was equally as rough as the exterior. My neighbor would disagree, but yeah. All right, any other questions to staff?
So, Brian, I'm just curious, I've gone, I tried to look at others, but are there any others down Old Twenty-Eighth that have a different facade on the rear or side than the front? Is this an exception that we've made before?
Again, I, so most of those buildings, I think, were built before our current standards were put in place. So I wouldn't be too surprised if there are differences in that, and it may be legal non-conforming, not something that we had necessarily.
The newest one would be the two-story. That's just directly adjacent to us, right? And that's a brick all around.
I believe so, and even that one is, was built a number of years ago.
I think, yeah, that was a addition, I believe.
There are several buildings there that I believe have block on the back or the side.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty standard in that area. Maybe not everybody, but some of them are, and again, like, as Brian said, several of them are older construction, but some have been added on too.
Yeah, I, and I'm fine, I like the design. It's much improved over anything that's there. I just want to make sure we're not applying a different standard to this as to anything previous.
Yeah, I'd say we do, anything new, we do take, you know, a newer look in and expect it to meet the current standard. So again, some of those old non-conform buildings, this one might be required to meet some that those ones aren't meeting. But I want to make sure we're not setting a precedent going forward of the next one, if they try to do something similar, might, might point back to this one. Just a note on the Village Designer Committee, I know so much the strategic plan focused on the village area, I think we'll make sure to tidy that up and have that group ready to go moving forward in case we start getting.
Yeah, they set the standards, so if there's nothing to be changed.
Yeah, yep, so they wouldn't have looked at this one anyway, but yeah, it'd be nice to have that group ready to meet if we need them to.
Elected chairperson of that committee, these things. All right, any other questions or staff?
I'm going back to the elevation really quick, but so the facade that's facing the parking lot would match the front. It's just a rear.
It's just the west side.
The west side is.
Yeah, is the only one that's different, correct?
It does look like there's some trees, so maybe we're just gonna ask the applicant if they're gonna keep that. Any other questions for staff?
The west side is the top side, I guess.
Like facing Irish.
Yep, correct. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Would the applicant like to come forward and we have questions?
Good evening, Ken Dixon with Dixon Architecture. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I, I served eight years on the Z B A board for Ada, so I know it's a thankless job, and I appreciate you guys being here tonight. So just jumping in, pretty exciting project. It's kind of neat to hear that this is one of the most recent projects to go through is B one village design scenario. The idea of village is, is kind of exciting and walkability and, and just the imagery that comes from, from that village feel, and it's admirable that we're, we're kind of pushing that. So like Mr. Hillbrand had, had mentioned, Hillbrand had mentioned ten thousand square foot two-story building designed in a, in a way, it's funny, you asked what it looked like when, when I was first contacted to help out with, with the design. I couldn't even envision what was at that site. I've lived in Ada Cascade area pretty much my entire life, and I couldn't envision what this site was and what that existing building was. It's tucked quite a ways away from that intersection. It was low profile and wasn't a very exciting looking building, so what we're doing with this proposal definitely is going to provide some visibility, is going to provide some improvements to that streetscape. So I was, I was tasked with creating something that was, was of a character kind of stately in nature. They have clientele that they want to draw into the site. They want to, they kind of want to have an imagery for their building. It's, you know, kind of that iconic, you know, professional law firm and, and has a real stately feel to it. So as we looked at that, we, the building is so far away from the old Twenty-Eighth Street road, it's not your typical village. If you go to Petoskey, you go to Holland, you go to what Ada's doing, those buildings are right up on the sidewalk, and it's a street and sidewalk, and then these beautiful buildings. This one's set so far away that that village feel starts to, you know, it picks it back up as you get further down, but we got this, you know, unique shape of where it bulbs out and, and ties into Cascade, and, you know, how do we address that? And while, while respecting the village kind of feel of the building, so looking a little bit for something grandier, the big sweeping curve that you see at the front there, in the, in the kind of stately precast concrete entrance, you know, kind of colonnade at the front there, and the signage and the crown across the top, you know, that's done because of that distance. We're trying to really draw people in and have something that's visible. So that, that's what kind of set up the, the style and the look of the architecture of the building with that big sweeping curve. So that's the background on where we are today. You asked me some questions, or you guys were talking about the masonry on the west side. I just talked to Holly, who is one of the, part of the ownership group. We're willing to give, not give that up, we're willing to complete the entire building in the brick. That was done, it's kind of a cost-saving measure. You can get a, it's called Bella Brick. It's actually masonry. Yeah, the typical brick is eight by two and two-thirds i- is the brick size. The masonry that we're looking at is four by sixteen. It's almost like a concrete block, but half the height from far away, it almost looks like a brick, so you can match kind of the brick, but you can do it in masonry, which is about half the cost for that facade. It's on the backside, the north side, Dr. O'Cheff's here, the smiles. He, from his parking lot, might be able to see through the trees and see that, that slightly, it's not a very broadcast facade, so we're taking some advantages of taking the stately building and finding some cost-saving measures, but as, as we do discuss, if that's a, if that's a point of contention, we will be more than happy to just continue with the brick and make the entire thing be the brick style. The other thing, Article eleven of the design suret or the design principles was the is the parapet. So we look at breaking that parapet line, certainly support that. It's a great, it's a great design feature. So we try not to keep the entire elevation of that parapet at the same height. We use that requirement to pronounce that Kiper Kramer stately feature with the canopy and the crown and, and, and the, the kind of flaring cornice on, on the building. So we did break the parapet there. And, and to accentuate that, we keep everything else kind of similar. If, if that's not enough, there wasn't text as to say how much percentage or, you know, linear distance, or so. We felt like that addressed it, but again, we are here, amenable group. We want what's best for Cascade, and, and we will do what needs to be done to make you all happy.
Any questions, family? Yes.
Yeah. And ballpark, I'm not looking to hold your feet to the fire, but what's the ballpark difference going from brick to the concrete blocks, the savings? Is it?
It's not, it's not, it's, it might be five bucks a square foot or something like that. I know, it's not.
Huge dollars.
A game changer.
Okay.
It's not. It's some, some of these older buildings, when you study older buildings, you know, they, they did a decorated front on the front, and as soon as they get to the sides, they go to a cheaper brick and along the backs. We're playing with that a little bit, but we really didn't really pull it off in that true manner. It would just be the main facade would be the dial-up, and then we'd get back, but we're just looking at, you know, as facade that's not visible. But again, we're willing to change that.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Just if we could get the answer on the soil cleanup, if there was any needed.
Was there an environmental done?
Currently underway. We're waiting on, I'm sorry, Holly Jackson, I'm one of the members of the applicant. We're currently waiting on some of the, all of the building debris has been removed, but we're waiting on a van with no tires and some discarded internal structures. There's a tub and a shower. We are waiting for those to get removed. And I understand that our environmental engineer had already had a phone call with the prior owner, so they've given a questionnaire that's been signed and returned. There was a final interview, but they do not expect to see any issues with soil at all.
My only concern is, I mean, they, they were developing film there, there, there were absolutely chemicals, so.
Oh, yeah, we, that's one of the conditions for us even moving forward, is having a clear environmental. It has to be clean. We won't touch it without.
So if that's a, one of the requirements, you're fine with that?
Excellent.
Any other questions? Do they have?
Thank you so much. Yeah, there was mention of the retaining wall, I believe it was seven feet. Could, could you show on the layout where that is? And the size?
So here, it's right here. It's this white line.
So it's by the parking lot?
Yeah, just, just west of that parking lot, again, down the hill, it really only visible kind of, it's just to hold the, the earth back there.
Yeah. And the elevation goes from, looks like seven thirty-two, is that the?
Yeah, it looks like seven feet.
Okay. And everything behind that wall is mostly the tree line.
So there's gonna be a guardrail on top of that?
We're taking bets on who is gonna stand first.
Yeah, a fence, some sort of barrier.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I don't think we have a detail on that yet, but we'll definitely put a forty-two inch height rail there.
Oh, that was included in the requirement. You'd have no problem with that. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, some discussion perhaps before we take the motion.
Just talking about the back facade, I think when we talk about setting precedents, I think if, if they're willing to do, continue the same brick throughout, I think it would be a good stipulation just to, to set the precedence moving forward.
Yeah, I agree.
And I was gonna ask before, before you go, member Rissy, Ralph, are, are you good with the parapet as our resident architect? Do you feel like it meets the requirements?
Yeah, yeah, I like it. I think it's a handsome building. It's done a good job.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, member Rissy.
The proposed dumpster enclosure is not shaded as, as the parking lot is, is shaded as being paved, but the dumpster enclosure in the drawing here is not shown as being paved. Is that actually going to be concrete there or something under the dumpster? I'm assuming it's just a.
I would make that same assumption, and I apologize, Justin Monstrous had triple meetings tonight, and we got the short end of the stick. So if that's, yeah, it, it most definitely needs to be concrete.
Absolutely, okay. As long as we're on the same page for that. I think it's a, I, I think it's a great improvement over what was there, and I think it, I think it would be a benefit to have, have this.
So it sounds, sounds like whoever crafts this, the brick, the environmental, the guardrail, and concrete under the dumpster.
Can we not use the word guardrail? Because I'm thinking of Kent County Road Commission guardrail.
I'm not making an emotion.
Let's use the term barrier or fence.
Seems to me like member Rissy is set to make a motion, so.
Oh, no.
I can, I can take a step. I think I would, in the case, I would move in the case of twenty-two dash three seven two nine to approve, approve the site plan review as requested with the following additions, completion of the environmental study, matching facade on all sides, forty-two inch railing or safety barrier across the retaining wall and pavement under the dumpster as discussed.
And if you included staff recommendations.
In addition to staff recommendations.
I would support that.
Okay, so the member, the member Rappin made the motion to approve with the stipulations and staff recommendations, and member Rissy supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Cascade.
Yes, welcome. All right, the next topic is very exciting.
Oh, yes.
Brian and I have been talking about this for a while, and doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so I'll let him brief you, and let's see if we can fix this.
Yeah, so just as kind of a brief review and maybe introduction too, as well as, as one of the appendices in our zoning ordinance, we have a township major street plan to classify streets as, streets as arterial, collector, local, and then there are certain requirements that are tied to those. For example, in the residential areas, there's larger setbacks needed along the larger streets. And then what kind of brought this up was that specifically on there's certain type two special use types that are only permitted on arterial or collector road. So the area of the stretch of craft between fifty-second and sixtieth, the southwest side of the airport is all, is all master planned, future industrial, and most of it has already been rezoned industrial. So a, a property owner came, I'm looking to purchase to the properties that are zone industrial, wanting to put a trucking terminal there, which is a very common use in the industrial zoning district, but does require type two special use and a requirement that it be on in arterial road. So I'd informed them at the time that it's currently classified, we wouldn't be able to permit that there. I did tell them, you know, it's something we can look at as a township, and it might make sense, as I mentioned here, that these, the master plan was last revised in two thousand and ten. So I think it's time to review that. That's what kind of brought it on, and then we'll look at it as well, if there's any other streets that makes sense to take a look at as well, so. Just wanted to kind of introduce that tonight, see if people had any general questions, and if, off the top of their head, if there's any other streets you'd like me to take a look at specifically, whether they need to be reclassified or not.
Brief question, who is the trucking company?
It's one that's actually located, I think, in the city of Grand Rapids right now. There's looking to move to Cascade.
But you don't remember the name?
I don't remember the name off the top of my head. It's not one that I recognized before or anything, but they're looking to move to Cascade here.
And Bernard. Is that, that road capable of the eighty thousand pound trucks now, or is that something that's to be done?
I mean, that's where the, you know, lax facility is. They're already have a lot of large truck traffic.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's already truck traffic going down through there. Again, there's lax already on there, and we allow, you know, warehouses and a lot of other, other industrial uses already.
So it's just clerical?
It, I, I think it mostly is.
And there's probably, when Brian and I were talking about this, I think there's more than just this road, right? And, you know, typically, I'm wanting to form a subcommittee and hand it to Scott to run. I, I, I do think that in this situation, if everybody is agreeable to it, I think, you know, we can, we can ask Brian to kind of go through and do this exercise, right? And it's, it's a valuable exercise to do because we want business to come here, right? I mean, would, would not better ideal place for a trucking terminal than there, and they can't go. That's a problem. So.
Brian, where did you leave it with that company?
I basically told him this, that I, again, as currently classified, we don't have the ability to approve it, but I will bring it to the planning commission. I kind of told them, you know, I, of course, I can't approve this administratively, but in, in my opinion as staff, I think it's worth the township looking into. So he was under a time deadline to move forward with the purchase, so he was still considering that.
Can you tell him that we, we are going to indeed look at this?
Yeah, I'll keep him informed and.
Yes.
Do we, how, how many other places do, are you aware of in the ordinance where, where a specific use reflects this map?
I believe, and I'll go, I'll do a deeper dive as well, though my first kind of look, it was only the residential setbacks, and then the specific special to, type two special uses in that seventeen oh seven one section. That was my, again, that, in that initial review, the only place that tied to these road classifications.
Okay, because I, I mean, I, this looks, looks to me like a tangled up web. If, if we say, well, absolutely craft should be upgraded. I mean, you've, we've approved lax there, you know, and this is the perfect spot for this, so we should, we should certainly change the classification of that road, and then, and the other side, so what about Thirty-third Street?
And that is one, actually, I think we'd look at as part of it, but.
Right, I, I, I think you, you could really open it's next year, because then there's gonna be somewhere, we're gonna pick a road where there's one lone house, and you know, then that person's gonna be like, wait a minute, you just changed me to a collector road, and a minute ago I was residential.
We can give that guidance to, to Brian, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be looking for that. I think there will be possibly a home or two on craft that might be affected by that, but something we'll take a look at and, and write up.
I mean, the area is changing, but it's interesting, you know. John J. Osmo Boulevard is not.
Is that shaded? Maybe it is.
I don't think it is.
Thirty-third's a great example, right? I mean, that.
Thirty-third, yeah, the, what's the street that comes off of Thirty-third that goes over to Thirty-sixth Street? I can't think of the name of that couple of them.
Right, yeah, the one thing I did see is in two thousand and sixteen, it looks like former director Peterson had, they were, he was looking at, I think it was driveway spacing specifically, but as part of it, they did a little sketch-up of possible changes to major street plan, and they ended up not making changes to the driveway spacing, so they didn't bring it up, but I mean, I'll even pull that out just to see if any brief discussions have been looked at or, or anything like that.
I remember discussing this map once before.
So perhaps that's one of the guidelines that you all might want to think about, and we can email Brian, like the streets that you bring us, how many residents are there, right? And, and are there other guidelines that you think would, would be helpful for you as we, we make this decision or?
Well, I think there's something should be put into, perhaps maybe our new software that we're getting, that every five years, an email comes up saying, hey, it's time to review this.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is twenty-ten.
Yeah, well, like, I'm curious why Twenty-Eighth Street is not a collector road and Thirty-sixth Street is. You know, what, what's the, Sixtieth Street isn't a collector road, but Fifty-second is? You know, I, I just Butrick and the cords aren't, you know, those seem like they would be collector roads to me, but Forty-eighth Street, I don't, is that even? I guess that would be, again, I think there's a.
Collector and major collector too, right? So that's not even brought up.
I know, that's only brought up in the definitions.
Yeah.
Not, not mentioned again later in the ordinance.
I, I, it looks like this could be a bit of a hornet's nest here, but.
He gets us a list, and then we just review it.
Well, I guess I'm wondering if it's really necessary. Do we really need to have the specific, do we really need to define what roads are collector and are arial and all that? Or, or can we have those sections that reflect this map? Is that language necessary? I guess that's what I'm trying to.
Excuse me, that again, like.
You mean, just get rid of it?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because if, if, if we need to reference it.
You know, we can look at that too as part of our review of the.
That's a great point.
I, I guess that's.
We have zoning, right?
Wait, we have, we have zoning, and, and it sounds to me like in the, on the light industrial side, it's just the only thing that's really reflecting this map is, is this, this trucking depot side of it, and on the residential side, it's. And on the residential side, it's setbacks. Well. I, I, I'm curious, are those setbacks larger if you're on these roads or smaller if you're on these roads? I mean, is. I guess what I'm trying to find out is why do we have this and is it really necessary before we?
This is something the road commission would dictate because to be, it would be like structurally. Like whether the roads are what they consider when they're looking at the roads.
Right.
What are collector roads to get you to?
That's why they approve driveway permits.
It, it could be clowning too, like, you know, the, the arterial roads are first, are primary and then major collectors are secondary and minors are.
But if so, then that's, this is their definition and why is it?
I'm guessing the, the reason that was in here the most is some of those type two uses where they believe they are higher traffics and they're required to be on these collector or arterial roads. I, my guess is that's maybe the driving force behind it and where it might come up the most.
But it's, I just, it's, oh, this map is always going to be out of date. Yeah, but I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to be so blunt, but it's, if you have very few things reflecting it. It just seems to me that it would make more sense for this body to say, you know, that's a high traffic use for this street. We'd like to see a traffic study and, and that would probably be more accurate than a map that was last edited. In twenty-ten, you know, I'm.
That's, that's.
I just, I guess I'm just putting all the questions out there. Do we really need the map? That, you know?
So back to the business that was looking at this, the site. The road commission would have to approve parts of their proposal anyways.
Really just the, just the curb cut.
I would check and see the county.
Would the road commission look at what kind of like semis are coming in and out of that curb cut when they look at it?
They might in these high industrial ones.
Car into a street versus a semi.
The, the road commission is going to. Look at the curb cut and, and where it is and the vehicles that they're talking about running through there. But I think the big thing. For someone running that type of business is going to be whether or not the road is an all season standard. And that's really what it'll come down to because if there's seasonal restrictions on the road, then they're not, then somebody is not going to put a business there. They can't.
So that bonus is on the business then.
Right.
To determine whether that street is appropriate for their business or what they're going to do.
Right.
Again, I'm going back to what you're saying about getting rid of this and just trying to logically see it through a business proposing something.
And we, we don't, we don't really control the roads. So I really feel like this is kind of. I don't know. I mean, I, I obviously if, if somebody came in tomorrow and wanted to put a. Trucking terminal on Butrick, you know, I think we would all kind of be like, well, wait a minute, it doesn't fit there, but you know what? It doesn't because our zoning doesn't allow it. So I kind of feel like we have our zoning ordinance to protect us from those types of things and. So, you know, if, if somebody wanted to do that, let's say in an area that is future zoned to allow for a trucking terminal, they wanted to put a fifty-second street. You know, that's not shown on this map either right now, but it's zoned potentially for that in the future, but then it would have to run water and sewer there. So I mean, there's, there's different things that, that.
Right.
Gets what we're looking.
I feel like the roads are more the road commissions.
So, yes, member.
Yeah, I think before I support pulling this stuff out, I'd like to know the reason why it was in here. I can't imagine that the people that sat in these seats before us just put something in or put it in here. I, I have to imagine or I would like to hope that there's a specific reason why they did this, right? Cause there's reasons why we do things. So I'd like to find out if maybe it's a county requirement that this is in there or they, some sort of background, if that's possible.
Sure. So perhaps it's a two-part assignment. Hear me out. The first part is, you know, Brian researching the, the history and, and also making a recommendation. Whether it should be or not be here and perhaps compare it to our neighbor townships, right? Whether, what they do. And then I think the second part is if, if we say, all right, we want to keep it, what roads would he recommend? That we amend and, and add to it. What do you all think of something like that?
I, I have one question. What is the trucking company's deadline? Like what's their timeline that you said they were under kind of a time?
I believe it was today. They had a very short deadline to.
This one today?
No, this is a zoning amendment, so it has to go for.
But, but here's the thing, the, the trucking industry is going gangbusters, right? We just need to, you know, put it out there. Whoever owns that, that, you know, it's available now and they'll advertise it and we'll get somebody else.
Yeah, and I just want to make a slight disclosure, a big disclosure. My husband works in the trucking industry.
Sure.
He does not work for a trucking company, but he works in the industry and deals with a lot of trucking companies. So that's why I wanted to know if it was somebody. That I knew. I also, my son's girlfriend, which is not a long story, but her dad owns a trucking company. So just pure disclosure.
Yeah.
Just to put it out there.
You can speak to, I mean, it's going crazy right now. There, there's huge, so again, we, the minute we change it and the, the, the commercial realtor that is representing that. Piece of land advertises it, somebody else will be here.
I just, I just feel like it's a disservice to whoever currently, that's the sad part. You know, whoever currently was in there looking at it, it's a disservice to them.
It is because we're using an antiquated map. Obviously it's an antiquated system and that's why I. Let's review and see if this is necessary.
But let's do our due diligence and, you know. There'll be other opportunities, I think.
Perhaps the fact that we're discussing it and they're aware of that might make them willing to do a conditional offer subject to this.
So, all right, everybody's, we don't need to do a formal vote on this. We're, we're all agreed with the plan. All right. Awesome. And I think we've got a few weeks before our next meeting, right? We're, we're in September, so. Awesome, awesome. All right. Moving on. To article eight, old business. We had a presentation to the township board, so. I already know the answer. How, how do we do?
It went well as they all approved it. I was trying to be brief. I'd hoped everybody had read the notes and Brian presented it to them. So. They had a couple of questions, but I think it went well, right?
Yeah, they approved it, so it must have went well enough.
Trustee Nordhuck, how did you think it went? Were we well represented?
Everything went very well. And then later in the meeting, we actually adopted the roundhill committee recommendations.
Double win, right? The planning commission.
And how did that, how did that vote go? There we go.
I, I, hey, I've said this from the beginning, like the, the subcommittees are paying off and. It's a lot of hard work and we all appreciate it, but man, they, we're doing something which is a lot more than I think this body's done before.
And I think it says a lot that they realize like supervisor had asked, would. Roundhill had turned out the way it did or have the issues it did had they taken those steps from the beginning. And I think. Looking backwards is always not always great, but to recognize that certain things wouldn't have happened if those would have been put in place. I think says a lot about the subcommittee as well and the things they found, so.
It was unbiased. I, I've heard that from a number of, of the trustees on both sides of the aisle, if you will. That, you know, it, it was viewed as an unbiased, actionable report specifically to the roundhill. And so I think that speaks volumes. Excellent. Any other old business? So we move on to any other business. All right. Any other business? We have another subcommittee that is outstanding. Anything new there?
I don't know that I would say it's outstanding because I haven't done much yet.
Okay.
But we're meeting, we're meeting Thursday, the eighteenth, eighteenth.
We were just discussing this. It wasn't on the.
Yeah, it hasn't been noticed. Does it need to be noticed?
We just put an agenda on the website a day or two before.
I believe, did I say, I sent you the agenda, didn't I?
I don't think I've seen an agenda. I don't, I don't think I made it on our calendars. No.
Okay. So didn't I send it to you right after the meeting?
Right after?
Yeah.
I know Ben said the minutes right. I'd have to double check if he sent me one right after.
Yeah, I think you, I thought you sent the minutes and then I thought I sent the agenda at the same time. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that tomorrow. I can check my sandbox.
Is there a meeting on the eighteenth or is there?
We did discuss that, that when it would start.
Okay.
Right. This is the proposed agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, do you send it right after?
I sent it in July twenty-ninth.
Oh, gotcha. With the minutes. Yeah, we were, we were planning on.
Yes, it's Thursday, August eighteen, seven thirty AM. I say, I say in the draft agenda. Yeah. Okay. So yes, we're planning on meeting on Thursday at seven thirty AM.
Seven thirty.
That is, that's what I had.
You just tell me, I'm putting it in my calendar.
All right. Sorry about that, everybody.
Might have an eight-year-old visitor with me.
Well, that was going to be my next question. Will, will you have a forum? Does that work for everybody?
I'll try to make that work. Okay.
I thought that's what we, I thought that's what we had the. This is part of the reason I, this is part of the reason I did it that day is because I, I thought, yeah, I did this at eight sixteen AM. So it was right after our last meeting, I think. But I, I thought this was the time and date that we had all discussed.
It's in the minutes.
That's correct.
Okay, just so you know, just because we discussed it, if it didn't come out, I'd already.
No, I, I understand and that's my fault. I should have, I should have communicated with him right away when I. To make sure that he had got it and distributed. I could distribute it. Would you like me to distribute them in the future just to everybody or send them to you first?
You can send them to me first. That's.
Okay.
All right. We, we don't meet for, you know, close to a month. So that, that's why I'm asking that when, you know, it might be opportunity for two meetings between now and then. Our next meeting is on the, the twelfth and it's back to back again because of the holidays. So just be aware of that. So. I think it's the twelfth and the nineteenth.
Yep.
So. I suspect that they might be longer meetings because we're got a month worth of backlog, so. Be ready for that. Any other business? Any visitors on Zoom? All right. I hear a motion to adjourn. For, I'm a deering, supported by. Rissy. All those in favor, say aye. Good night.